Okay, everybody. Welcome to this evening's town council. And first of all, I'm going to read the message about recordings. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by the town council. Please note that the recording device is sensitive and the recording cannot be edited. So do not say anything you do not want recorded. If necessary, I will direct all recording in the room to be stopped, but generally I want to avoid doing that. So we will normally record everything except any item taken in closed session. Members of the public may also make their own recordings, but must follow our rules for doing so, including stopping recording when requested. Whilst we do not accept anonymous speaking at the public forum, members of the public who wish to speak but do not want their name published must please indicate this before saying your piece. Thank you. Okay, we'll go to the agenda. Apologies for absence.
We have apologies from councillor Furman, councillor Fox, councillor Lucarini and councillor Miller Jones.
And item two, declaration of interest to request for dispensations. Anybody? Item three, minutes of the meeting of the town council held Monday the 28th of March 2022. Inferno minutes of the council meeting held as a correct record. Can I have somebody to propose that? Yes, councillor Hamlin. And second, councillor McManus. All those in favour? Thank you. Okay, item four, to note progress of actions arising from the minutes not covered by this agenda. Be with me. Okay, let's have a look at the items arising. Page 244. Page 245. One here for C22119.
Yeah, so the minutes have been amended and I'll ask councillor McManus if you can re-sign that page for the last meeting.
Okay, and what was the page? C22022?
Yeah, that was submitted as per the votes, as per the minutes, and we have received an acknowledgement.
Okay. Page 246. 247. And 248. 249, appendix 250. 251. 252, 253. Okay, thank you. Okay, so item five, reports from district county councillors on issues pertinent to Havill and the public forum. Do we go for the police first? If anyone's got anything to report back from the police?
So councillor Burns distributed some details about the middle of the month, about the 14th of April, he sent around Constable Country and the criminal figures.
Any comments on that as well?
Oh, sorry, I should also mention that I reached out to inspector Matt Paisley. And he's willing to come along and meet, but he wasn't able to make this one. But I don't know whether the May one is suitable really, but it's the annual meeting. Whether we ask him to come in June?
Hmm, yeah. Thank you. Thank you for that. Okay then, item 5B, county councillors. I saw there was one by councillor Mason that had been...
I submitted a report, chair, for this meeting. Some of the county councillors have a meeting and I didn't feel unless councillor Roach has anything to add, I didn't feel there was anything outstanding. It's been fairly quiet here. The only change that we've seen is there's a new head of service that covers highways. So I think there might be some changes with the way that highways work. And I'm hoping it's going to be for the better, but we shall see. But there's been a change there with the directorate, so it's been, the council's been fairly quiet.
Okay, are there any questions with councillor Smith?
Yes, I just asked, the money that's reported to be available for resourcing roads. Do we know what type of roads that's going to be? Whether it's going to be main roads or whether it's going to be estate roads?
The answer is they haven't told us what roads they're going to do with that figure that they quoted. So they're going to be doing a lot more, trying to do a lot more payments, but they haven't told us. But essentially, I think where, although where you're going, where we see for a lot of our estate roads, they're absolutely terrible. Because of this H-mop thing they've got, then they're going to make the criteria. So we're trying to do something different to try and resolve that. But it's not just a problem for Havill, it's a problem across the county for various towns where they've got these estates with the concrete roads that they've got the tarmac topping and it just doesn't stick and it keeps breaking. So it's not a problem that's unique to Havill, although it's a real problem for our residents and causes those trouble. I think the price tag across the county was in the tens of millions to fix it. So I don't know what the resolution is for that, but I dragged Matthew Hicks round and showed him the roads on the chalkstone. So they're aware of the issues, but I'm not sure how we get the council doing it.
So councillor, who's set that criteria and can it be changed?
It was set quite a long time ago and the answer to that is I don't know if there's if there's an appetite at county to change it, is the short answer. It's something we will raise, but that's why I'm hoping it's new made of service for highways and I think it's a different look at things.
Councillor Mason?
I don't have an awful lot to add on that. I certainly know that the contract was up for renewal and that some of the processes were being integrated upon about the fact that a pothole is repaired and right next to it is another one that doesn't quite need H-mop. And within a week it does need H-mop. And it seems a ridiculous waste of money not to do the two in the same instance. And so that, so I know there's some discussion about that. I also would encourage people to encourage residents to use the subject reporting tool, if only to highlight the more flags that there are in Havill. Perhaps we could make a stronger case for works to be done in Havill. So with that having been announced, more things that are reported, the better I would say.
Councillor Marks?
Just on the point that councillor Mason raised. When Mary Evans was in charge of road transport, she actually deliberately changed that so that it weren't left with the odd holes that if somebody went out, because she found that a really inefficient way of working. So she took great pains to change that system.
No, it didn't. It didn't get changed.
Well, she...
No, it didn't get changed.
Because she had extra, extra stuff put on the vehicles.
No, no, it didn't. My point is that it didn't happen.
Because that was what she came and told us, David.
Well, no, it never happened.
I mean, it does make sense to do it. Can you guys not orchestrate that? Because what she put in place did make a lot of sense, didn't it?
The issue is with the contract, highways don't actually repair the roads. It's a firm that's contracted out and it's the rules by which they will charge the county for whatever job is being done. And that is what needs to be discussed.
But I think also, Joe, the problem is their repairs are so bad. The ones on the main roads have been repaired numerous times, they've just come out again. So I think there's an awful lot of wasted time and money and effort goes on because of the inefficient way they're repairing it.
Okay, so councillor Roach, if you take that forward to perhaps find out a little bit more information. Thank you.
Yeah, well, John and I will.
Do you think we could have somebody from roads come here and talk to us? Because I think we, I think we need to have these discussions. And forgive me councillor Roach, not negating the fact that you will push it as well. But I think they need to come here and explain, one, why the road repairs are so poor and secondly, why it's so inefficient. Because we can all see it's inefficient. So I think they need to come before us and explain why what was offered wasn't put in place and why we're still struggling with this. I accept that they're not going to be able to repair everything because it's, the magnitude is, you know, just massive really. But I think they should come before us and answer to us directly.
So you're making a proposal that we...
Please, I am making a proposal that they help before us, yeah.
So we write to...
I'll second that.
You write to them?
Yeah, can I just clarify? Do you want somebody from the engineering side? I'm thinking of guy up at...
Gav Agregan?
Ruffin.
He's gone, hasn't he?
No, still there, isn't he? Yeah, he's at Ruffin.
The service, you want the service manager?
Yeah, I was just thinking in terms of actually, in terms of having extra material on the lorry. The difficulty is, is that once it goes, once it goes cold, it has to be thrown away. So they can't just carry spare stuff in case they spot an extra hole. So it all has to be calculated and bought, as councillor Mason said. There'll be a contract for a certain amount of tarmac that has to be used in a certain amount of time. So it might be useful to have that engineering kind of input from somebody.
Okay, councillor Brown?
Yeah, I would say that the engineers know fully, you know, fully well what they need to do. It's the policy that's wrong. So I think we need someone, you know, actually from the councils come on and say why they're not doing it. The engineers know exactly what to do and they, I think all the holes are there. The money or the policies are in place. They really need to speak to the council officer.
Okay, councillor Burns?
Yeah, it's worthwhile looking back to 2016 when H-mop came in, the highways management operations tool. When they signed the contract with Kears and became Suffolk highways. It came through, there's no discussion with then councillors at the time, it basically nodded through. It had these series of dimensions and depths, which we all know. You can apply the same rule to every single pothole in, you know, we know about Cheltenham Way, Milford's Way. You know, that's been going on for ages. But what's more important, what councillor Mason mentioned, which I fully support, the concept of reporting. The problem is in 2017, I spent months with highways looking at the end user side of things, on the highways operation tool. When I gave up being a councillor in 2017, they immediately dropped any plans to adjust the software. So it's very disconcerting to the end user, we all see it. You put something in there and then it disappears. It's gone into their database, but that's it. That's the last you ever hear of it. Unless you know what that reference number is, you will never find it again. So I think they need to invest a lot more money into that tool. How it ever won in the prizes, I don't know, which they made big deal of it. And I, in cabinet, I actually, not cabinet meeting, it was a cabinet meeting, I think it was the new term. Whereas I criticise it highly. And I think that needs a lot more investment on it. You know, things like fix my street is a lot easier for the end user and does feedback. And I think that's what you guys need to go back to and say, look, spend some money fixing it. Not just the roads, but fix the software as well. Thank you.
So just to be clear, so you prefer a policymaker to talk to you about the roads or understand the difficulties of repairing the roads? You just want to make sure we get the right person along for you?
Both.
Okay, councillor Hamlin?
Yeah, I'd fully agree. It definitely should be the policymaker because it seems like the policy they made up wasn't very efficient. As councillor Mark has just quoted. So it's finding out what it was, what they negotiated in the past and also what they think they're going to do to make it better in the future. So it's definitely the policymaker, yeah.
Okay, so we go with that proposal then. So you invite a policymaker to one of our meetings. Councillor, it's like this...
I would want to ask councillor Roach and councillor Mason, outside the meeting, who you'd recommend then for that? Thank you.
So that was proposed by councillor Marks and seconded by councillor Stinchcomb.
Are you taking your vote now?
You want to vote?
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, so all those in favour? Yeah, thank you. Okay. So the next one is 5C, the district councillors. So anything from the district councillors at all? Councillor Roach?
Yeah, just so you know, tomorrow's cabinet, West Suffolk, we will be looking at local plan at cabinet level. And then that will go to a full district council meeting, an extraordinary meeting on the 17th. Once that gets through for council, then the next consultation will be going out back end of May to run for eight to 10 weeks. So that consultation will be coming out. So whilst that's running, it will give everybody the opportunity to look and see what's coming up for the local plan. There'll be another call for sites within that. But the documents are bothering now. But for Havill, we're saying that we're not proposing any more big developments. There'll be some windfalls will come through, but we won't be, we won't be looking to increase the amount of lost girl housing for Havill because we've got a 10-15 year build out already. So that's where we are with the plan.
Any questions on that? Councillor Smith?
Questions?
This is still difficult here.
Well, whilst we're in this meeting, I'd just formally like to thank David and John for being on the working group as well because they've been really invaluable getting through the process. Because we've had some interesting discussions, have we not?
Yeah.
Thank you. Councillor Smith, please.
Yeah, just something that I've been chasing up was the award that came out recently about the changing places, money awarded by the government, central government to local authorities to provide changing places for people with severe disabilities. I did inquire why West Suffolk wasn't, because the only council within Suffolk didn't get any money awarded. Apparently we didn't apply because we didn't have the necessary building available to West Suffolk. There wasn't any attempt to sort of ask other parish councils, town councils if they had any suitable buildings. And I seem to think that something in the hub in Mayordom Hall and something in the hub in Brandon is sufficient. But that's not really doing much good for our residents. But anyway, it's something that they're taking on board and they're going to look at it for the next round of funding.
Okay, thank you. That's disappointing, isn't it? So, okay, so any other district councillors want to comment? So 5D, members of the public are welcome to make statements or put questions at this time. So finish. Good place. Thank you.
This is an update on the groups that I run. I had a quick look at the notes to see what I said last time. There's, it's not just, so I can talk about the stuff that I deal with, but we know there's other areas like mental health, there are big problems. And we had something on the breakfast television this morning about motor neurone disease and all the money's going to be allocated and they haven't received a penny yet and that sort of thing is going on, isn't it? Right, I'll start with the Burton Centre. We are now allowed to use the lift and that was used for the first time last week. So I had a couple came who haven't been for nearly two years now because they've used the lift. And somebody else also used the lift who wouldn't have been able to use it before. It's not really working properly because the alarm is still taped up. And the reason for not using it in the first place was because the alarm wasn't working. But we're being allowed to use it to come up. We have to be let in, but we can let ourselves out. So that was that. We're also, I've had the letter now that we're going to be charged by St Nicholas from the 1st of June. The rates are reasonable. There's still negotiations about whether at some stage are going to be charged, setting up time. And there's also a question about whether it's going to be charged for any storage that we want to do there. And yeah, so there's a few things. As far as TT is concerned, that should be okay because the rates are reasonable. They were slightly less than we were paying at the Art Centre at the town council. Men's group, just about all right. The Thursday group, which is sort of unofficial because it was run by the hospice. There's no question of them starting again, I don't think, who are not like down staff. So we'll just go unofficial and go somewhere else because it's just not worth the effort. Right, I think I put down that Alzheimer's Society have taken over from Sue Ryder on Friday the 1st of April. And I think I said that I'd be contacting them, which I did. I'd been given an all-purpose number by Sue Ryder, which could be anywhere. I contacted them and they gave me a local number, because I said West Suffolk. It's a Lowestoft number. So I phoned them and they gave me a contact. So I wrote to the contact over the weekend, that weekend of the 1st of April, and I sent it on the 4th of April. I haven't actually had a reply yet because she has been off sick all the time. So then eventually after about a fortnight, I transferred to her boss and I had a quick reply from her, that was last Tuesday. And she said, explained the situation, I said, I will reply shortly. Well, I haven't had it yet. But I had been speaking to people there and you find out things that it would appear. They do not have an office in Suffolk. Everything's done from a village five miles north of Norwich. And it's a Norwich number. And it would appear it's them I've been speaking to. Phone the lowest, it's a bit like connecting communities. You phone the Lowestoft number and you're actually talking to, or whatever it is, it's somewhere other five miles north of Norwich and it's, everybody is there. I found out a few things from somebody who probably gave me too much information, so she'll be in trouble, that the lady I'm supposed to be dealing with, she's not new to the Alzheimer's Society, but she is new to the area. And she is off sick. They also said that they've had trouble recruiting. They are still recruiting and advertising, recruiting and training. And of course it was her, because when you go on the internet, you look up the stuff for Alzheimer's Society Suffolk and it comes up with three places, Bury St Edmunds. So I phoned that number and you get patched through to Norwich. Ipswich, that doesn't exist. And the one I have been phoning, which is Lowestoft, and you're patched through to Norfolk again. And I, talking to this lady was helpful and she said, I said about the, I found the address for the office for the Lowestoft number. Oh no, that closed at the outbreak of Covid, when the first lockdown. So they don't have, appear to have, an office in Suffolk. Everything's dealt with from this place five miles north of Norwich. It's Norfolk and Waveney. So all right, Waveney's in Suffolk, but there you go. I mean, in my naivety, I wrote to this lady who hasn't replied yet, saying, anytime any of the team are down this way, drop in for a cuppa and a chat. That's not going to happen. Don't think it is anyway. And was there anything else on that? I think there might be. No, so I am still waiting for, the only information I've had has come from Suffolk Family Carers who are going to be working with them. They think are going to be the feet on the ground. So that's all the information I've had and that's from my big, my firm contact at Suffolk Family Carers. But she arranges and organises all the courses for carers. She won't be doing that, but all the information's come and it's the standard thing from the Alzheimer's Society about, you know, about what they're going to do for the money they've got. So, yeah, but, yeah, sorry. Yeah, it's, yeah, so it does bug me a bit that unless all the money has come from the government to cover this, we as taxpayers are paying Suffolk for some of this service, which is all coming from Norfolk. But until I hear from these people exactly what's going on. As I say, Suffolk Family Carers, I've heard that they are going to be, the feet on the ground, they're going to do the, they're going to handle the assessments, which would mean be doing home visits and so on. It'd be nice to know exactly what the Alzheimer's Society are doing for their money.
Okay, thank you for that. Any questions for councillor Marks?
Yeah, Dennis, thank you. I know you do an enormous amount of work with them here. So you're saying now, it's quite interesting because I can't remember the latest names, but they may work with Suffolk Family Carers. But I thought there were two people who were working with Alzheimer's now in Havill. And I just wondered whether it's worth contacting clinical commissioning in West Suffolk. Because they should ultimately be underpinning this and saying, what provision is there in Havill? And can somebody come here and explain to us what the provision is? The other thing that would be useful to know, Dennis, is how many people have we got in Havill with Alzheimer's?
Oh, that I don't know. I can only talk for my group, yeah.
And how are they getting support? You know, we don't really know that. So I think we need to go back to West Suffolk Clinical Commissioning and ask that question and say, what support is being provided here? What's the evidence for that support and who is providing it? Because as I say, I met these two that and I, I think you're right. I think they do work with Suffolk Family Carers or, yeah, or the befriending scheme. I can't remember which. They seem to be the people who are going to put that service in here. So it sounds like nothing's really happened, doesn't it?
No, there's, I think Suffolk Family Carers are running something on Thursday at the Leisure Centre about family carers. So I may pop along to that and see if I know anybody and...
But I think we underpinning need to understand what's happening
Yeah.
from a commissioning perspective. And clinical commissioning are the people who are supposed to provide their services. So perhaps if you're happy with that, we'll ask, if I may, ask the mayor if we can ask clinical commissioning what exactly is happening and who is providing that service then? So that you have a clarity on that.
I did, sorry, I have spoken to our newer members who've only started recently. And of course I gave their details to Sue Ryder, but they didn't get back to that before the end because they were tasked with clearing all their cases by the 31st of March, full stop. So they didn't deal with any of the new ones. So I asked these people, have you been getting any backup support? No.
Councillor Mason?
Unless I misinterpreted what councillor Marks was saying, was I would second the idea of again, the council writing a letter. Because I think it's part of our bigger understanding of issues that residents are facing. And Dennis, you're doing an absolutely astounding job acting on behalf of the people that you're representing and supporting. But I think it would also be helpful for the council to again have a bigger understanding. So rather than perhaps Dennis contacting clinical commissioning, if councillor Marks is suggesting that we contact clinical commissioning, I would certainly second that, so that we can have a better understanding as a council.
Okay. Yeah, so we have a proposal then from councillor Marks and then a second one by councillor Mason that we write to the commission group. That's the current situation.
To establish what provision there is for Alzheimer's services here and who is providing it. I think it's important because we come back to them, wouldn't we? We can find out what, you know, they can give us all the statistics in the world, but let's have them here and say what you're actually doing for them, you know, what provision are you giving? So I think some real clarity on it rather than just keep saying that.
Okay, so if you have a vote for it, will you pay for it?
I have had the usual, when I said you knew about this back in November, December time, but you should have been up and running on the first, oh, we were up and running on the first and they have got feet on the ground. Would you like me to keep somebody informed of what I get from Alzheimer's Society when I get to it?
Yes, definitely.
Who shall I? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Okay. So we go on to item six, the mayor's report, which I just sent out earlier today. There was only a couple of things on there that I've attended recently. Ipswich on Saturday for the St John's ambulance. And yesterday I attended the, at the Art Centre here, the Havill Superband concert. So that's all that was on there really. And just speaking about the few events that are coming up before the end of my mayor year. Okay, any questions on that? Any questions on that? Okay, so we go on to item seven, One Havill Partnership. Shall we see a report from the clerk?
Well, to be fair, the only activity I'm actually aware that One Havill has been doing is the health event that Elizy Kaku organised for the 7th of April and also the Ops Group. And also the Ops Group were discussing potential sources of funding for a facilitator to work on the business plan. But I think some members here attended the Health Day. So there wasn't, there hasn't been any other meetings of the, of One Hayverhill in any case.
Okay, yeah, I mean, item B says to hear any feedback from councillors who attended the event. So is there any, any more? Is it Burns first?
I found it very useful. I, I felt that the presenter there was genuinely thinking about our, what we need for the future. And, but I'm a bit concerned about the lack of data that they have. It seems to be very Suffolk-centric. And very little from Cambridge and Essex, particularly for our GP services. But also equally for people who need to, you know, go to A and E or our patients or whatever. So I think the proof will be in the pudding next time we see some stuff. But I, I found it more positive that a lot of the meetings I've been to, I don't know what other people thought.
Okay, councillor Marks?
Yes, I, I mean, that doctor is particularly good. She is, of course, she works for Public Health England and she's seconded at the moment to West Suffolk for the new hospital build programme. So she's working on the co-location of non-acute services and also on the internal structure and build programme, the clinical areas within the hospital. And I'll say this again, and I won't stop saying, you, you all individually need to make sure you do follow those consultations as they come out. Because co-location of the services, there is only so much money in the pot. And those services, when they are co-located, the money will follow the service. But the footprint of West Suffolk Hospital is enormous, which means if you put something here, it's difficult for people from Stone Market to get to here, for example. And if they put it in Stone Market, for example, we can't get there. You need to look at that footprint. It is an enormous footprint. And there is no determination made at the moment. They're going to look at needs and they're going to look at future needs, which of course will look at demographics. So we might have a lot of people at the moment who need hearing issues. But in the future, that may not be the case as we move into a younger people moving here. But it is something that is incredibly challenging. It's either going to go remarkably well or it's not going to go well at all. But that hospital will be an acute hospital and it's not going to have non-acute services because they simply couldn't cope with the demand and capacity if they had to have non-acute services on there as well. So, you know, she did make that quite clear in the meeting. The one thing I would say about her, she's absolutely superb. But of course, there are many elements she doesn't know about. So when you're asking her about our mental health services here in Hayverhill, that's a clinical commissioning issue, not one for West Suffolk Hospital. So there will be things she doesn't know about. And she will verify that for you if you ask her, but you know, she won't necessarily know that. So it's a, it's a really complex thing. And I think until we, the other day I was on a meeting, they're talking about patient-centered care. They're talking about holistic care. They're talking about integrated care. But we've all heard this now, year on, year on, year. And if they can't even get the patient records right and they're not integrated, because Addenbrooke's Hospital won't comply. So that won't give the information to the patient records. And we keep talking about this, but unless the patient records are robust, I don't see how we can ever really achieve integrated care. So I think we're, you know, there are enormous challenges for the future. And we must never stop talking about them and pushing forward and giving them the problems that we see so that they can try and put solutions in. But it's not going to happen in a hurry and the hospital, of course, won't be built till 2030. So we need to be mindful that we are looking quite way ahead at the moment really. And things will change in that timescale. I thought it was a good meeting, I thought she was very positive. And she's a genuinely nice person who genuinely cares. So I think she'll take back the feedback from here. And I will keep an eye on that because I sit on the new hospital board programme, which is really what she was talking about.
Okay, councillor Smith and then councillor Mason.
Yeah, I was encouraged by the current recognition that only a third of the patients from this area actually use West Suffolk. The vast majority goes to Addenbrooke's, which is, doesn't necessarily show up on what the, the data that West Suffolk use. So they're going to be, hopefully they're going to be looking from a different angle now, rather from the West Suffolk side, looking at the residents and where they come from and where the best situation citing would be for the services. But it's not, obviously it's not just West Suffolk, it's villages in the past, the border in Essex and Cambridge here. So, yeah, I thought that was encouraging.
Okay, you, councillor Mason?
Thank you. Councillor Smith has just kind of made my point. My overall feelings from the meeting is one that grows a willingness to listen, which is, which is helpful. And so it's going to be interesting, follow-up meetings. I think it was a good start. Can I, on a slightly separate issue, can I just thank Colin Clark for including the minutes of the One Hayverhill meeting? It's actually really useful, really informative. It felt in places, but it, it was also an opportunity to report on the things that were happening that might not have been in the minutes. It felt like minutes plus. And I just wondered whether it was an actual record of the minutes of the meeting or whether it was an opportunity to add on some additional information as well.
It's, I think because One Hayverhill has kind of exhausted its current business plan, the task groups aren't meeting. So what I think you saw was members of the board usefully colouring in the gaps. So you were getting reports from board members on things they were aware of. They felt the One Hayverhill board should know. If you look back through the minutes on the website, you will see that the, when the task groups were meeting, you were getting a kind of a more ordinary set of minutes, which was just the proceedings of the meeting. But it's just, it's just, the just nature of the beast. Until we can really get a new business plan in place and new task groups or new tasks for the existing task groups, whatever comes after the woodwork really. I think we will get that slight, slight sense of stasis. It was quite a subdued meeting. People, I think people were aware of the fact that, that One Hayverhill was kind of paused.
But helps anyway, thank you.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, no more questions, Mr Mason? Okay, thank you. So we go on to item eight, adoption of committee reports. So item A, planning working party to move the adoption of the minutes, the planning working party held 5th of April and 11th of April 2022, and the recommendations contained therein. If I can have a proposal for that, councillor Hammond, second. Councillor Smith and all in favour? Thank you. Okay, so item B, personnel working party. To move the adoption of the minutes, the personnel working party held 22nd of March 2022, and the recommendations contained therein. If I can oppose the flat, councillor Stinchcomb, second. Councillor McRannus and all those in favour? Thank you. Item C, finance working party. To move the adoption of the finance working party, held 12th of April 2022, and the recommendations contained therein. Proposal please, councillor Burns, seconded, councillor Roach, all those in favour? Thank you. Okay, so we go on to item nine, civility and respect. Consider asking right, we write to Honourable Matt Hancock MP to support the early day motion 691, asking for more appropriate sanctions against councillors who breach the code of conduct. There was a link on the agenda, if any of you have had a chance to have a look, we need that.
Do you have a copy in your pack?
Oh, right, there is a copy as well, as well, it seems.
Right, in your pack?
In my pack.
I'm happy to read out the motion if that would be useful to them.
So I want the motion read.
Just do. So this was the early day motion posted by a Conservative member, Dr Julian Lewis, back in November. And the motion is that this House notes with deep concern convincing evidence collected by the Association of Local Council Clerks, showing that far from being untypical, the toxic behaviour by parish councillors in Cheshire, and I remember the Hanford video, exposed online in December 2020, is endemic in a significant minority of town parish councils. The House deplores the departure from their roles of dozen of part-time and full-time clerks as a result of bullying by councillors who face negligible sanctions for such misbehaviour. Regrets the anguish thus generated and the substantial cost of the public per se arising from settlements following breakdown in employee, employee relations, and calls on the government to establish an appropriate and effective sanctions mechanism, including financial penalties, to deal with local councils found guilty of such misconduct.
Okay, so if anyone's got any comments on that, councillor Smith?
Yeah, could you just clarify, the code of conduct that we discussed recently, does that not cover what this motion is asking?
It does, but when the old national standards were scrapped and replaced by local standards in the Localism Act, the Localism Act also removed all the teeth. So that there is no real sanction available to a council to sanction one of its members. And you'll know locally that Long Melford, Hadley, Newmarket, there's been some really quite terrible instances, very locally, of behaviour. And there's almost nothing that the individual councils can do. So you can have a council that has a member who is disrupting everything and bullying the clerk and making it impossible for the council to get its agenda through. But there's nothing any of you can do about it. And the most you can get is them to apologise. So it's a safe, there's a, there is a new code coming through from the Local Government Association, which will come to this council and councils across Suffolk, which is an upgrade to the existing code that you signed, but it's under the same act. So it can say what it likes, but the law doesn't permit councils to, you can't suspend members from the main council. There's, there's nothing you can really do to stop something. In Needham Market, they had to take an injunction out to stop a councillor going to the council offices when there wasn't a meeting on. But that was the most they could do. Basically an exclusion order, they couldn't go within X hundred metres of the council offices. So, yeah, that, that's basically what the early day motion is asking the government to do, is put back in some teeth.
Councillor Marks?
Yes, along with, I think John uses old standards, don't you, as well? Doing, well, I've used standards for quite a long time now. And we did use to have teeth. But the interesting thing about having the teeth is because we are elected by the people, the officers don't have sanctions against us because the people put us in our role. And we challenged this at the last standards meeting and said, actually, the little power that we did have with the new, the new Adams coming, that they want the whole of Suffolk to adopt so that if you're a county council, district or town, it won't matter, you'll follow the same rules. They really don't, there is no power. The only way you can remove anybody is if they commit a criminal act. And then under, under the rules, they could be debarred. But to be honest, standards now, you can ask people to send a letter of apology. You can, I mean, we worked with mediation quite a lot back in 2004. And in fact, some of the councils round here that were really incredibly bad, we had quite successes with those when they were, I mean, people were threatening to murder each other. It was really quite bad, setting each other's houses on fire was really, really, really unbelievably awful. But we still didn't really have, and, and apparently if we went to judicial review, the council has to pay for that. So going to mediation was the way we went forward. But we don't even seem to have that option anymore. That seems to have been removed from some action problem whilst, whilst our plaudits attempts at this.
It's not my attempts, this is, this is the MP.
You know, this, this policy. I just think that we've got our hands tied with this. We did challenge it at the last standards meeting and we really didn't get very far with it. So, you know, it, it's a very sad reflection on that and it's absolutely appalling that people do treat each other. But you only have to look at yesterday in Parliament. If, if Parliament are going to tolerate the way they speak to each other publicly and that's the, that's the example that we set to our young people, what chance, what chance do we have in parish councils, frankly? So I applaud it, but I just don't think, I think because we're elected by the people, I think the challenges are great.
Councillor Brown?
It sounds to me as if someone's trying to do the right thing, we should support them and ask our MPs to support them. So I propose that we do, do exactly that.
Okay, councillor Smith?
Yeah, yeah, I'd second that. It'd be interesting to test for want of a better word, our MP, now that he's not restricted by being in a cabinet member or a minister. Because previously he wouldn't have been able to sign anything like this.
Okay, so the proposal then is to write to, oh, sorry, councillor Burns?
Yeah, I have a slight problem with the wording of this. I was of standards, I was also chairman of standards for St Edmundsbury. We had numerous cases of, obviously St Edmundsbury related villages and towns. And actually, I remember one was actually a parish clerk was the problem. So I, that's why I have this problem with this wording of this, because it assumes that parish clerks, you know, what due respect is still, are wonderful. And I, I do feel that that should have been worded differently. Is it should be all members of the council, including the clerks and anybody else who's involved with it. As, as, you know, because we do, you dead right that the standards have actually no bias. We've just gone through a major exercise of consultations and everything else like that. Why that wasn't introduced as part of that, I think we've got to all have cost and everything else. You know, but I do, I do find that it's, it's badly worded. And there's only 13 signatures for it, for the early day motion so far from the government, not government, sorry, the MP, sorry. And I do wonder whether, you know, I'm sure the wording to Matt Hancock is actually going to do nothing for us. I don't think he'll do anything. But if it, if it dealt with the both sides of the equation, because it's a bit like a contract, it becomes an onerous contract in many ways. So I do have a big problem with this. Thank you.
Just go back to Colin and then go back to councillor Smith.
I do, I do agree, I was quite surprised. But I guess it's because it's the Association of Local Council Clerks that they particularly focus on that. Because actually, the behaviour, and if you've been on the Standards Committee, you know, that the behaviour of a person, whether it be a clerk or a councillor, doesn't tend to be particularly focused on one person. They can be nasty to lots of people. I mean, at Long Melford, it was actually, although the clerk, they got through clerks, like no one's business because the clerk was used as a kind of proxy. But actually, in terms of setting fire to people's houses, it was councillors versus councillors in that respect. It does say here, it's not yet had any amendments. And I think it would be entirely proper for us to suggest to Matt that in supporting it, he asks for an amendment, because it's actually about, you know, we have the Noone Committee, Standards in Public Life, it still meets. And really, it's about all people, obviously employees. If I acted in that way, I can be fired because I'm an employee. As councillor Mark said, we can't fire a councillor under the current rules. But this should be about behaviour in general, as opposed to particularly directed towards clerks. Although I understand obviously why SLCC would focus on that. So I think it would be an excellent idea to suggest that he also suggests an amendment so that it's about behaviour in general, not particularly this very narrow band.
Fully support that.
Are you having to make that an amendment?
I'm happy to accept that.
You have to accept, all right, thank you.
Okay, so the councillor Roach wants to.
Yeah, I was just going to read a couple of what Colin just said, because for clerks, they're employees and there's a code of conduct and the clerks have a line manager. In our case, your Colin's line manager, so there's a process for that. But from the employee's side of view, if you've got councillors that are being disdertious, bad, whatever behaviour is, is poor, there's no redress. And I think, I think it does need something. Because we should all, we should all have respect and dignity for everybody. But there has to be some consequences if you're not. And the fact is that really there aren't. And I think that's, that is a shame.
Councillor Mettle, you've touched on this.
Yeah, I don't have much more to add than what councillor Smith and councillor Roach have just added. I mean, I do reflect upon the reason for this being the particularly explosive example. I mean, I do reflect upon the reason for this being the particularly explosive example that was shared on national media. I think it's that explosive nature of this measure, I think probably seeks to want to control. There should be sufficient measures in our Code of Conduct, that if we are dissatisfied with a clerk, for whatever reason, then we would approach the mayor as line manager to the clerk. And, and for me, it seems that there was a lack of protocol that the councillors' demonstrations in that particular instance. But I, I, I think general dissatisfaction is one thing. I think explosive is something different. And if this is what this is aiming to do, then I, I think it would be good for everyone's reputation as councillors, that we never see any other councillor on television demonstrating that behaviour again. So I think without in that frame, with maybe an amendment, I would definitely support that.
Okay, so if we just go by amendment or else to?
So the amendment is that it should be behaviour in general, and not specifically only about bullying clerks. Because councillors bully other councillors as well and act very badly. To be honest, I wouldn't be surprised if that doesn't actually, there's probably more of that goes on. I don't know whether councillor Marks or councillor Burns would say that actually it's probably councillors versus councillors, probably more often what came up at the Standards Board over the years.
But if you remember, Colin, we challenged some of this and it came back. And I think the answer was if it is in a political arena, so if you're, if you're being discourteous, but in a political way, it's acceptable. I, I mean, you've even quoted that, I think, yourself at some point where, you know, you were discussing something and it, it was believed to be political and therefore it was acceptable.
Yes, we, we must still be able to have robust debates.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, yes. But, but without setting fire to somebody's house.
Okay, so councillor Brown put forward that motion and councillor Smith seconded it?
Yeah.
You'd carry, happy for the amendment, yeah, okay. So if all those in favour, please? Okay then, go on to item 10, Financial Matters. To authorise the following payment list, totalling £29,312.74. Would I have someone to propose those? Councillor Davidson and secondly councillor Roach. All those in favour? Okay. Councillor 11, Actions Taken Under Delegated Powers, which will be bill number. 12, To Receive Any Urgent Correspondence After The Agenda Was Published. Thank you. Item 13, Date of Next Meeting, Monday the 16th of May 2022, which is the annual meeting. Item 14, To Exclude The Press And Public. To resolve the Terms Of The Public Bodies Admission To Meetings Act 1960, the public and representatives of the press and broadcast may be excluded from a meeting during the consideration of the following items of business, as publicity will be prejudicial to the free flow of debate and discussion. Would I have proposed that? Councillor Roach? Secondly councillor Mason, all those in favour?